Okay, well, we'll just take roll call when our commissioners show up, but we'll get started with the meeting, so, Mr. Clerk.
Roll call, Commissioner Webb. It's excused, Commissioner Colleen, Commissioner Clark Coleman, Commissioner Basham. Chairman, you do not have a quorum present. Moving.
If she would step inside, we'd have a quorum. Okay, we'll keep going.
Next item, C1, under unfinished business, forwarding a copy of the Office of Legislative Auditor General's performance audit report on the Correct Care Solutions.
Okay, we'd like to welcome our Auditor General, Ms. Cora, and her staff, and her guests.
Marcy Cora, Auditor General, if everyone could introduce themselves, please.
Mike is now the Audit Manager.
Crystal Thomas, Supervisory Auditor.
And Regina Lee, Senior Auditor.
Welcome.
We have guests, if they could introduce themselves.
Good morning, Dave Brooks, Director of the Department of Health, Human, and Veteran Services.
Welcome.
Keith Dugokensky, Correctional Healthcare Administrator for the Department.
Kamal Kepuru, Finance Director for the Department of Health, Human, and Veteran Services.
Welcome.
Today, we're going to continue our presentation on the performance audit of the Correct Care Solutions contract to provide jail medical services. I believe we left off at Slide 29, so I'm going in, it's on page 28 of your actual audit report. I'm going to turn it over to Crystal Thomas, and she's going to cover this objective, and then I'll add into her presentation.
Starting on page, Slide 29, and report, the pages 28 through 29. In review of the insurance coverage, we noted three areas that were not in compliance with the contract provisions. In addition, the county was not listed as an additional insured on the insurance policy. Those three areas were the medical malpractice, professional liability, umbrella or excess liability coverage, and cyber insurance. Our recommendation, we recommended that the County Risk Management Division implement a procedure to ensure the contractor maintains the required insurance coverage as a requirement in the contract, including listing the county as an additional insured. Their response can be found on page 29 of the report.
Before you finish, let the record show that Commissioner Coleman is here. We do have a quorum. Please proceed.
If I could just add onto this recommendation, Risk Management officials agreed with the recommendation, and it's already been implemented.
On Slide 30, or Page 29 through 30 in the report, the eight-hour health screening not always in compliance with the contract provisions. We had three bullet points. One was CCS is responsible for conducting health screening on all offenders within eight hours of the admission to the jail. Second, to test the timeliness of the screenings, we judgmentally selected a sample of 10 inmates booked into the Wayne County jails for five different time periods. The third was four, or 40% of the inmates in our sample did not receive a health screening within the required eight-hour timeframe. That table can be found on Page 29 of the report.
And to the Department, why was it a problem providing like an eight-hour health screening? I mean, well, you're understaffed, or what's, there's got to be a reason for that, if you don't mind.
Dr. Keith can respond. I think our focus, similar to what we talked about a couple of weeks ago, is we didn't really have the processes in place to ensure the compliance with the particulars of each piece of the relationship, the contract with WellPath. So the health screening was happening, it was just not happening always within the eight hours, but it was always happening prior to an inmate coming into the jail. We're now refocused with them to make sure that it happens within the eight-hour expectation. We're actually now measuring that. We didn't really measure it that quite as discreetly as the auditor did when they came in. So we've put systems in place and changed that, and now we will have the data for that and be able to report it and correct, and have real-time action planning occur. But Dr. Keith can talk a little bit about one of the challenges, and particulars in a urban, large jail, has to do with the way inmates come in in kind of group basises. They're not coming in one by one, they usually come in after a half-day of court, and they come in in a big group. So there's a bolus of inmates coming in that then have to go through a clinical screening process, and that does take times. If two people come in after the afternoon court session, it's a lot easier to keep up with timeframes than if 30 inmates unexpectedly happen to come in at the end of an afternoon session, and then you've got to manage through all 30. So there is that little bit of a wave issue, but you could probably talk a little clinically better about that.
Yes, good morning, Keith Dugokensky, Correctional Healthcare Administrator. Dave is correct. You know, this is one of the things that we are, in fact, measuring with our key performance indicators, and it has been being measured all along. We did not have in place an eight-hour timeframe to identify compliance. It was either done or not done in our past key performance indicator structure. That now has been changed, and we do have an eight-hour compliance window to measure, in fact, this critical quality service. In addition to that, as Dave has said, in fact, most all of the inmates come into the facility after 4:00, when they're done with their district court hearings. So we get an influx of 60, 70, 80, and it is difficult sometimes to get all of those people seen immediately because they come in in batch, they don't trickle in through the 24-hour period. But we do have now an indicator in place that will allow us to monitor this a little bit more closely. And lastly, I'd like to add that all of these individuals did get a receiving screening, and all of the receiving screenings were completed within, all but one got a receiving screening within seven hours of the time that they came into the jail, so.
Well, thank you. Moving right along.
Okay. Our recommendation is that HVAC.
I'm sorry, Keith, Mark, just trying to say something.
Hi, I'm Mark Morris, original Director of Operations for WellPath. I just kind of wanted to add something to what Keith and Dave were saying about the eight-hour timeframe. I think, well, I should say I suspect when this contract was written, there was a national focus on putting an hourly timeframe on when intakes were completed. Some of that focus was generated from the organizations like the National Commission on Correctional Healthcare that set the standards for care. They've kind of backed off from that eight-hour a little bit, especially in a situation when you're talking about a post-arrangement jail like we have here in Wayne County, because what happens, as Keith indicated, you might get 50 people in at one time, and you have physical plant restrictions and stacking restrictions, both on the custody side and on the correctional healthcare side, to get that. So to allow the healthcare staff to triage and see those patients that are in most need of medical attention upon intake, that there's been a little bit of a shift from focusing on that eight hours. So like in the case, and it's very common here, 50 people get booked in at once. The nurse correctly triages and sees the patients that need the attention first. Those intakes can take anywhere up to 20 minutes. So if you have, in the case of Wayne County, and the physical plant, you know, can have really one nurse, maybe two, doing these intakes. So if you get 50 patients, the nurse triages and does the intakes on the 20 people that need those intakes the most, that could take up to the six or seven hours to get those 20, leaving those less critical patients, less critical intakes to be done afterwards. So I just wanted to provide that insight for whatever it's worth, and just know that, you know, that clinical thought process goes on when we're looking at which patient needs to be seen before, before the other ones.
Yeah, before I recognize Commissioner Colleen, to the Auditor General, who wants, who has set the standard for eight hours for patients to be seen? Is that the federal government, state, or?
We audited based on the requirement in the contract.
Okay, so basically, it was a contract agreement with you folks that wasn't, looked over the horizon to see that those kinds of things happen? Because I know this is the first, it's not your first contract, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and so that issue has never appeared at any other location?
As far as timeliness, I do not, in the contract set I administer, this is the only contract that has an actual timeframe on the timeliness of the intakes. Again, we're accredited by the National Commission on Correctional Healthcare, and their standard for intake is just in a timely manner, leaving that triage and clinical thought process that the clinician is completing them.
I'm new at this, but it seems like this is not a new issue with Wayne County, and when Wayne County understood agreement with a contractor, that this would be resolved. So going forward, it sounds like you know that there's going to be times when you have 50 or so people coming in at once. I mean, can't the courts work with you on those folks? I mean, it seems like it's a solvable thing versus saying, and I heard someone say it today, it's like, well, they're not pushing back as much, or something, or it's changing, but if that's still an issue going forward, say next year we do an audit, thinks that we could resolve it, you know?
On behalf of the Department, if I could add in, I mean, the reality is, it's a contractual requirement. Our job is to make sure we enforce with the vendor, with the contractor, performance against the contractual requirements, and that is our plan, and that's what we'll be doing. If at some point or another we need to adjust that, then we'll bring forward, if appropriate, a proposed modification to the contract that the commission can review if we recommend it. We are not doing that at this point. At this point, we have a contractual requirement, and we need to work with the vendor to ensure that that happens and align the operational processes to support that, and report the numbers transparently and with a focus on continuous improvement.
Yeah, and from WellPath's perspective, we agree with that 100%. We absolutely understand that we are under contract to meet that obligation at this point in time, and I was just kind of presenting that for, you know, any future consideration that may occur.
Okay, and to that point, Commissioner Colleen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What do the initial screenings, what do we learn from that? What is the information we're trying to get from those initial screenings? The initial screen is an effort to identify individuals that have medical and mental health and dental problems when they're coming into the facility, so they can be directed for plugging into the medical, mental health, or dental care system that exists at the jail. So we want to know at the front door if people have acute or chronic illnesses that need attention while they're in jail. So the screening is tailored and identified to exactly determine that, and additionally determine if there's any risk with regard to suicidality. So really, those four things, the screening is determined to identify.
Okay, and I would guess that, based on the last answer, that we got kind of a busy jail for comparison to jails around the country, where it might not be a, I'm not going to stick with the eight hours, but that might not be as much of an issue at lower-volume jails, just a comment. What percentage of people in the jail are really in need of the services that get identified in the screening?
We service about 50% of the entire jail population for some sort of medical, mental health, or dental care. So if our ADP is right around 1,800 or so, we probably have at any one time near 1,000 people that are receiving some type of services on a daily snapshot.
P is the daily population?
That's correct.
Because what I worry about here also, given kind of the high volume of needs of the people that we take in, is liability issues. You hear about it on a somewhat regular basis around the country, where people come in and they get, they're in and they're in the cell for six or seven hours, but they have some sort of, so I just want to put out that I also, you know, regardless of the recommendations on time and eight hours and all that kind of stuff, it just seems to me, the longer it takes for a screening to be done, the greater liability we are accepting by not having those done. So I'm pleased to hear you're dealing with it, look forward to finding out, indeed, that the times are down, but the liability question is also one that concerns me. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I would just say, I agree 100%. This is a critical component to the overall continuum of care, and that is identifying people at the front door, so you know what it is that they need. And 100%, this is something very important.
And Felicia, you had a comment? You want to weigh in?
I was through the chair, just to add a little background and maybe context to the eight hours. And Dr. D, you can correct me if I misstate something, but that was the standard that was in the original consent agreement through the court, there was an eight-hour standard, I thought, because I know we've had numerous discussions over the years, and in 2017, that standard was changed for healthcare to the National Center for Something Standards. Right, which, as my understanding, does not have that rigid eight-hour timeframe, though that could be the basis for why it was in the contract originally, because that was something that the county historically had to do because of the consent agreement.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not sure, Felicia, if in fact that was in the original consent order, but as Dave has said, we do know that it is in the contract, and our goal and target is to be within the eight hours for compliance. And we have adjusted our key performance indicator now to make sure that we're measuring that going forward, so we can keep a pulse on how quickly it is that we're delivering this service.
Okay. Please proceed.
And our recommendation was to develop adequate procedures to ensure the health screenings are completed for each booked offender within the eight-hour period per the contract requirements. Moving on to Slide 31, the mental health encounters not recorded timely, that can be found on Page 30 and 31 of the report. Wayne County has an intergovernmental agreement with the Detroit Wayne County Mental Health Authority to provide mental health services to the jail inmates. CCS provides inmates with face-to-face contact with mental health professionals. CCS required to enter inmate mental health encounters into the WINE system maintained by the Wayne, Detroit Wayne County Mental Health Authority within 15 days of the month end. Between January 2017 and September 30 of 2017, there were 46,667 encounters, totaling approximately 4.7 million were entered into the system. However, due to contract delays, this money was not received until January 2018. During fiscal year 2018, this requirement for timely entry of mental health encounters were not met because access to the system was delayed.
Would you like to respond?
During this particular time period, there were a lot of IT, information technology-related challenges between the systems. So the particular period that was looked at, unfortunately, was that perfect storm. It's since been corrected, we are now electronically transferring information. The purpose of this item in the contract, remember, WellPath is a cost-plus model, that's how we pay them. This is actually revenue, if you will, that the county receives from the mental health authority. So we wanted to make sure WellPath had some level of skin in the game, some risk, to in a timely fashion submit claims for us. They actually don't collect the revenue, we do. They're paid on cost, so they don't have a typical economic incentive to submit the data timely, because it's really our payment, it's not their payment. So that's why this clause was put in there. The reason during this particular time period, they did not enter the claims in a timely fashion, was because the IT system wasn't operational for this particular period. They couldn't enter the claims, they were ready to. Since now the IT system is operational and working properly, we measure them and make sure that they follow, comply with the contract clause, and they've been able to do that. So we now have real-time measurements in place, so it's no longer an ongoing issue. It was at this particular time period a year and a half or so ago.
Was that anything to do with consent agreement also?
No, this is probably just business, frankly. It's a payment, we get about $5 million a year, paid to the county from the mental health authority, but it's paid based on us submitting claims, you know, patient encounter data, et cetera. And during this particular period, the mental health authority was adjusting their systems, so they couldn't receive the data. It wasn't because WellPath wasn't trying to enter the data, they just couldn't literally get access to the system at the particular time, and we had to work through that. That was more on a county IT and department side to the mental health authority, less so WellPath. They were kind of an innocent third party to this issue.
Mr. Colleen? Yeah, just to complete that, because I sit on the mental health board, ever since there's been an authority, there has been this question of getting the billing from the county done properly. It was done a few different ways three, four years ago, but that's eventually mental health dollars that we need, we need the accounting for. So I'm glad to hear, you know, because we're going to cut a check, we have to have encounter data to say, yes, it did happen, that had been an issue for three or four years, so hopefully it'll clean up, but I just wanted to kind of complete the loop on that discussion. Thank you. Thank you.
And during our procedures, we were able to confirm that they were able to catch up on the encounters once we were able to enter them into the system.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Our recommendation was to implement procedures to ensure CCS is in compliance with the contract provisions related to the input of mental health encounters in the WINE system. Slide 32, healthcare requirements not always addressed timely. Inmates may submit on a daily basis requests for health service calls, which are called sick calls. Sick calls must be triaged by a nurse within 24 hours of request. Our audit procedures included determining if inmate health requests are being addressed timely. Since the OIG does not possess medical expertise, we did not assess whether the proper services were provided. Procedures were limited to requests logged after April 2018, since there were no logs prior to then. We selected a sample of 70 healthcare requests for the period of April 2018 through October 2018. We met with CCS representatives and through the IRMA system, obtained the pertinent information from the healthcare request forms. Our review of the 70 forms noted the following. We could not determine when the forms were actually submitted, for 12 or 17% of the forms. Of the remaining 58 forms, 7 or 12% did not have a date as being received and triaged, and therefore could not be assessed. Of the remaining 51 forms, we noted one instance where the triage date was before the request date, and apparent error in one of the dates. 41 or 80% were received in triage within 24 hours. 9 or 18% were not received in triage within 24 hours, time period range between 2 to 28 days. Not ensuring that inmates are triaged within 24 hours could result in a health risk, the inmates, and/or safety concern for staff and other inmates.
So going forward, is that an issue with IT, I mean, our software programs, or is that a real issue that we have resolved going forward, or where are we at with that one?
We, it is not an IT issue, it's a work-clinical process issue. We've made some changes. WellPath has changed their nurse model for managing these, what's called a sick call in a more timely fashion. So I think we've made the changes necessary to now ensure this. We're also now measuring it, and we'll be reporting it quarterly in our key performance indicators, the KPIs, as Dr. Keith mentioned earlier, and we'll monitor this real time, and if for some reason we're not at the performance level that the contract requires, we'll be looking for additional corrective action plans. But changes have already occurred since this audit happened to hopefully get this back to the right type of performance.
And do they have a shortage of nurses? Is that part of that?
Overall, no. I mean, there's always some vacancies overall. If you'll remember last, a couple of weeks ago, we talked about it, they're a little bit behind the goal for staffing, but not tremendously. I think they're at 92, 93% of filling all the positions, so that's pretty good these days, and frankly, in healthcare overall. So I think it's really not a nurse shortage issue. This was predominantly, although on any particular day, things can happen. But this was predominantly a work-process issue that's now been adjusted with WellPath's assistance in kind of changing the model.
Ms. Cora?
I want to stay too. This audit procedure is included looking at the healthcare requests that were submitted and logged in by CCS. If there's any healthcare requests that didn't make it to CCS, we wouldn't have been able to assess them, because we were informed at a time, some inmates were turning in healthcare requests to deputies, which they weren't supposed to. So policies and procedures were put in place so that the deputies were no longer accepting those healthcare requests, because it eliminated the control of the requests through the CCS and the nurses. So our requests are supposed to go through the nurses.
Commissioner Dobbs has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think Marcy might have just answered my question, but I was wondering if all sick calls are triaged?
All sick calls that get to the clinic are triaged, that's that nurse position I mentioned, that WellPath has recently adjusted from a process viewpoint, so yes. The issue had been, and we're still struggling a little bit with it, frankly, is that there are times where the sheriff's deputies take the sick call from the inmate, and then have therefore the responsibility to get that to the clinic staff. That is not the best, or frankly, an appropriate practice. It's been what's been done historically, so we're working on changing culture and behaviors around it. You'll recall, we received accreditation from the National Commission on the, same thing Felicia, NCCHC. We talked about that a couple of weeks ago at this meeting, we talked about it yesterday at HHS. One of the items, I said, great news is, we've got accreditation, but they did have a couple of things for us to follow up on. No one's perfect. This was actually one of the items that they cited to us, the NCCHC, which is work better together collaboratively so that deputies, sheriff's staff, are not touching the sick calls. It's not clinically appropriate, there's privacy issues, and it creates the potential risk that something gets lost in the translation, if that makes sense.
I guess, maybe I'm more wondering if there is a process in place that maybe they're looking at, is this particular sick call really a genuine sick call? Does it need to be triaged?
We want that to happen by clinician, so the nurses really need, a nurse clinician needs to do that, you know, really shouldn't happen by a non-clinical person. Now, they do do that, then. They do determine urgency based on then the review of the prisoner or the inmate's identified need through the sick call. And obviously, if there's ever a crisis situation, they call a code and they get the clinical team, jail, you know, cell side as appropriate, you know, for the rare codes that do, clinical emergencies that do happen. That's kind of separate from a sick call, if you think about it. That's a deputy or someone alerting, you know, the organization, we have a code happening in this cell.
So there would never be a circumstance where an inmate would make a sick call and they would not get to triage?
There shouldn't be a circumstance of that. We're trying to make sure the processes work in a way that don't let anything fall through the cracks. That, again, goes back to minimizing how many hands touch the sick call, and making sure there are always clinical hands, not non-clinical hands. Does that make sense?
Yeah, you know, I agree with everything that Dave has said. Just a little clarification on the process. So the standard from the NCCHC requires that all inmates have access to healthcare at all times, in other words, can request healthcare at all times. So the system in place typically across all jails, including our jail, is that an inmate completes a form that they have access to, because it's delivered to them by the nursing staff, and they request healthcare. The requirement is that that form and the inmate need to be seen within 24 hours. That is the requirement. So that triage does occur. There are dedicated nurses in the Wayne County jail that take a look at these forms, and in fact, see the inmates within 24 hours of the form being completed. And a follow-up is needed beyond that, i.e., they need to see a physician or a nurse practitioner, they're scheduled with those in They're scheduled with those individuals for further care. But the triage has to be a face to face triage with the form and the inmate within 24 hours.
Yeah, I can't even say NCCHC. So to that point, Commissioner Kline has come.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'll look forward to the corrective action plan on this because this is another area of great concern of mine. You know, we're living in the age of I can't breathe and bad things happen. So I hope that we're doing some training or whatever with the deputies in the jail on what's appropriate and what's not appropriate. And then, you know, it's at one level, the human level, that we're taking care of this. But to me, liability also raises its head here. Not that long ago, in the Macomb jail, a young lady requested some medical attention, did not get it, and eight hours later gave birth in the jail. We can't have that. We simply cannot have that. I know, you know that too. But, so I just want to underscore this. I want to see the corrective action plan, treat people right and humanely at the one end, and limit the county's liability. It just takes one lawsuit and the whole cost of providing services in the jail suddenly, let's say, skyrockets. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So let me make sure that I understand what happens. If an inmate feels like he's ill or needs medical attention, he alerts the deputy. Is that correct? Who does he alert?
Let me try to clarify the process again. So what we're talking about here are non-emergent healthcare requests. So I have a cold, I have a headache, I have athlete's foot, a pain in my elbow, and I feel like I need some attention with regard to whatever that particular illness is. I complete a form that says, here I am in cell 12 on the fourth floor and my right knee is in pretty serious pain. The nurse will go ahead and look at that form and see the individual within 24 hours to make initial determination as to what kind of treatment is needed and perhaps resolve that right there on the spot. If there's something to perhaps be given to the inmate for an upset stomach or whatever the case may be.
Okay, before we go any further. Okay, so that's non-emergency.
Yes, that's correct.
So this form that this inmate fills out goes to where?
The nurse comes to every living unit and sees every inmate once per day and is dedicated to collect that form.
So it goes directly to?
Directly to the healthcare nurse.
Healthcare, okay.
It should go directly to the nurse during her or his rounds, not to a deputy. Because that's the issue I was mentioning earlier.
And that's, that was my concern also. So if it's a non-emergence, if it appears to be an emergency situation, then how does that process work?
Yeah, that process would be, for example, if the duty station officer is advised by an inmate, I have crushing chest pain, or notices somebody that's having a seizure or whatever the case may be, that officer would immediately call a code over the PA system that is in the jail. And then the medical team would respond to that location with the required emergency toolkit to address that particular issue.
Okay, so in that respect, the officer would be involved in it?
They need to notify, they need to notify the, call the code, right.
Because they are the only one, in fact, there with the ability to notice anybody. So it would be the duty station officer's responsibility to call that code and summon, if you will, the healthcare team to that particular location.
Okay, so suppose the officer makes a determination that I think that he's faking. Does he still have to go through that process?
Yeah, in our training of the officers, which we in fact do do, we encourage them always to err on the side of caution, never to make a determination that an inmate is faking or trying to get some secondary gain. Let the healthcare team make that determination. They're the ones with the skill set and the ability to make that determination. So if there's ever any kind of urgent or emergent complaint, the officer is directed to go ahead and call a code. If it's not clearly an emergency, they can call down to the clinic and say, hey, you need to come up and see so and so.
Okay, all right.
And just a point of clarification, you refer to the inmate as he?
Or she, he said.
Oh, thank, no, I meant when you first started, to make sure fair. Please proceed.
Moving right along to slide 34 or page 32 of the report. Lack of recording real time medication administration. There are two medication administration periods, daily, AM and PM. Medication is considered on time if it is given within a one hour, within one hour before or one hour after scheduled. In order to determine if medication were being administered in accordance with medical standards, we selected a sample of medication orders, which included medication orders from inmates who filed a medical grievance, variety of medications, including those for treatment of anti-anxiety, depression, pulmonary, heart disease, cancer, mental illness, and HIV. We were only able to determine from the medical records that the medication was administered either in the AM or PM without a specific time. Thus, we could not determine if the medications are distributed within the one hour requirement.
So, Ms. Cora.
Can I answer this too? We went through a pretty detailed analysis as part of our test procedures on the distribution of medication. We sat down with the healthcare administrator, I believe, if I'm saying it correctly. And the way it's detailed in the system, I think it's very, everything is detailed well. She was able to tell us if dosage was missed, the reason why it was missed, whether the inmate may have been out to court, or whether the inmate refused the medication. It was very detailed and I think she was very good at her job and what she was doing to show us how everything is so detailed documented for the medication. But our only concern was, we weren't able to determine the exact time that a dosage was given, whether it was maybe consistently every morning at 8 o'clock, or maybe one day they're getting at 8 o'clock, the next day they're getting at 10 o'clock. We couldn't determine that. So that's why our recommendation is to see if we can have more real time documenting of the administration of the medication through the computer system.
Yeah, my question would be to you then, was that part of the contract? I mean, we wanted it documented. I mean, was it part of the contract?
No, I think this is something we're asking over and above the contract, to have more real time document of the medication. I think there is, because systems out there where when they, they get the computer, when they're going to do administering of the medicine, it can do a more real time, 701 it was administered, like that, rather than AM or PM.
I guess going forward, do we have this resolved?
We're going to work on it with WellPath. This is just, this is an issue that their electronic medical record simply tracks the nurse or whomever delivered the dose as AM or PM. So the auditor wasn't able to confirm or verify that it was 2 PM versus it was PM. Doesn't mean it wasn't 2 PM, by the way. It just means they weren't able to verify it through the records. So we're going to, we've asked and we'll work with WellPath to see if they can adjust their electronic medical record. Obviously, that's easier said than done because this electronic record, one of the benefits of working with WellPath, one of their strengths, is they have this record in, you know, dozens, hundreds of jails throughout the country. So it's a best practice. But therefore, changing it probably takes an act of, shall we say, Congress within WellPath to alter their software. So we that, we put the request in, we're going to work with them to see if this is something that they're able to do.
Yeah, for the import-export capabilities of our software, it's just making it a time versus AM and PM. So it shouldn't be monumental. Thank you. Commissioner Kline.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a couple of kind of associated issues with the medication. When people leave the jail, what do they leave with for their prescriptions or whatever? You know, back in the day when we actually had a pharmacy in there, and it wasn't like just in time delivery of, you know, light bumpers to an auto plant, people would leave with a little bag of, you know, a week or two, I guess, of their medication. So what are people leaving with now that have prescriptions and medication?
I, I'll take a crack at this and then Dr. Keith can jump in as well. Previously, when we had an onsite pharmacy, which therefore had the limitations, it was 9 to 5 Monday through Friday. And therefore, was not available 24 hours a day to make sure we got scripts to the inmates, in-house inmates. So there was a downside to it. But at that point in time, we offered the opportunity to anybody being discharged, sorry, I'm a hospital guy, I call it discharged. You would call it released from the, from the jail to get a transitional pack of meds, two weeks' worth of meds. Very, very few took advantage of that because that meant the inmate needed to wait for that to get processed and available for them. And as you can probably imagine, most people, when given the chance to get out of jail, want to move pretty quickly to do so. So they rarely, we had less than probably 10% take advantage of that. What we now do, so that, so recognize, the program has changed since then, but almost no one used the previous program. Now what we do is we offer any inmate being released, a chance to get a physical prescription for any transitional meds, and they get actually a voucher card to pay for that at a Walgreens, CVS, a commercial drugstore type thing.
So they can pretty much go to any drugstore?
Correct. And use the voucher to pay for that first transition med set and have a physical prescription from the provider to do so. Similarly, very, very few inmates unfortunately wait around to get that. There still takes a little time to process, you know, because remember, this is not state prison where people know on three weeks from Friday, I'm getting out. Most of the time coming out of Wayne County jail, it's relatively immediate. You go to court for the day, the judge says it's time to release you, you go back, get your stuff, and you leave. It's not quite a scheduled departure like you think of prison as often. So therefore, there's time to, someone's got to write that prescription. Someone's got to get that prescription from the provider to the inmate. But it does take the inmate, therefore, it's a little bit of time to have to wait to get it. Again, similarly, less than 10% probably of our current inmates wait to get the script, unfortunately. We know that's an issue, by the way. I'm not saying that's a WellPath issue at all. This is not, this is our own, we got to figure this out. Because we have people who are released, particularly, not that I'm trying to judge, but there's physical health issues where you need a prescription, there's mental health issues too. And right now, those people who are being released who have mental health issues, who are on some type of medication to help them manage that, are not necessarily getting transition meds before they go back out into our community. And we need to figure that out. That's, that is serious. Now, physical as well, I mean, if you have diabetes or you have high blood pressure, missing doses still could have obviously, you know, clinical risks to someone. So I'm not saying that's ideal, but we all understand, I think, the scariness of thinking there are people with severe mental health issues who leave jail and don't have the opportunity to have the transition meds that they may need to before they get connected to that, wherever the next continuum carries outside.
I'll raise that over to the mental health authority too, because then that just increases the likelihood that we're going to see them three days later.
Right. And I'm sorry, I do just want to, one more point of emphasis on, I just want to make sure, that is not a WellPath issue. WellPath will work with us and actually, you know, it's a cost plus contract. They'll put in place whatever we ask them to do with regards to this. And we're actually asking WellPath, what are best practices? You do run this service in 3, 4, 500 jails around the country. Someone else has had to have this challenge and has had to try to work on figuring it out. We need your best practice sharing. So we have asked WellPath about that.
Yeah, and I agree with everything Dave said. And just as a last note, it is available for inmates to return to the facility after they're released. So if they get released at 2:00 in the afternoon and they would like to come back to the facility and sit in the lobby and actually wait an hour, two for the doc to write a prescription and have that delivered to them, so then they can take it to any pharmacy with a voucher and have it paid for. That is an available option. And that really is a nice opportunity and a best practice. Unfortunately, we need to be able to convince our population that they should access or use that opportunity. And I, right now, am working on an insert in the inmate manual that advises them in writing that this is an opportunity. We educate them throughout their stay that this is an opportunity. So we just need to do a little better job in making sure that they understand that they can do this, that there is no risk to them to come back, and that it is worth their time to go forward with this opportunity.
Are the courts aware of this, the release issue? I mean, are they working with?
We, I talked, I've talked personally with Judge Kenny about it, who's now chief judge. And he understands it. And I know he's brought this up as well. So they're, I think they're aware of it. I don't know if they, we've got to form some type of work team and work through this because then the, particularly on inmates who have mental health issues, then you even bring the mental health authority into play in a good way to talk about what other services are out there in the continuum of care and so on.
Judge Kenny's the one that held up my audit report. Never mind.
Yeah, the one other issue I wanted to raise was a couple of years ago, the ACLU sent a letter to Exec Evans in discussing treatment for HIV in people that were, and you know, I took note in the original contract and the original discussions with then CCS that they talked about using FDA-approved drugs. And I think the concern that was being raised and kind of the specific question I want to ask is, you know, for HIV, it's gone through several generations of what the latest medications are. And so if you wind up taking an FDA-approved drug, but not the latest and the greatest that you had been taken before you came in, that potentially poses a public health risk. So I guess my question is, and then you can, do we give them the medications that they were actually prescribed, the same whatever, not switching to a generic or whatever? Do we provide those drugs? Or is there just like, well, this is also on the FDA-approved list, so we can give them something a little different? And that goes even to your blood pressure medications and that kind of stuff. You make little changes to a different med that might be approved, but it still causes complications. So do we maintain that they're receiving the same drugs as they were before they were, are guests?
The short answer to that is yes. We have available and do prescribe all the latest and greatest HIV medications for our inmate population. And our pharmacy budget will reflect that. These are very expensive meds.
They are.
And just as a note, we are probably around $800,000 a year for HIV meds alone. And that is between one-third and one-half of our entire medication budget. So we are using the latest and greatest drugs for our HIV.
Well, I'm glad that we are and that we're paying for it. But given the numbers that you're talking about and without running afoul of any HIPAA, it kind of sounds like 10 to 20% of our population is HIV?
No, the drugs are that much more expensive per dose. It's not really.
So how big of, what percentage of our population is HIV?
The percentage is very small, but I can give you the head count. And that is somewhere around 30 to 40 patients at any one given time. So the snapshot, the ADP, the average daily population of HIV consumers in the jail, probably ranges somewhere between 25 and 40 on any one given day.
So it's 3 to 4% of our population? Okay, thank you.
Ms. Cora.
I just want to add, this kind of goes back to what Dr. Keith said. On page 36 of our report, we do have a table with lists some of the conditions that are being treated with their medication, the medication costs. So you can see that HIV was about 882,000 of fiscal year 2018. We think this is a good table, so you can see the different types of medication.
Ms. Coleman, Commissioner Coleman.
So when, when the inmate, he or she leaves the facility, are they connected up with any agency that will provide them with additional medications? Because this, this prescription will be for a short period, right? Transition. So when that's gone, do we, do we connect them with a social worker or someone that makes sure that, that they're able to get additional medications if they cannot afford them?
Yeah, they, they are connected, we have a social worker who participates in managing the discharge, particularly of complex patients, mentally or physically complex patients, on the staff of the clinic team. So that, that happens as part of the discharge planning process. And then they're connected in a, to, they're given information about. Now, whether the inmate follows through and continues to go to a provider, mental health or otherwise, you know, that's obviously going to be on the inmate. you know, that's obviously going to be on the inmate. We do provide information to them, refer them back, obviously, if they've already had active treatment prior to the jail, to their previous providers, but also that. We've had a small work group that's unfortunately only had one or two meetings so far that Dr. Keith and I actually participated in, Commissioner Colleen, with the Mental Health Authority, particularly about inmates being released who have severe mental health issues and how to move a little more upstream of getting the Mental Health Authority, because they're generally involved, not with every inmate, but most inmates in the, in the, in the jail are mental health consumer, Mental Health Authority consumers are on Medicaid and, and participate through the Mental Health Authority for the county. So we're trying to work on how do we do that better with them to connect that inmate into, Commissioner Colleen, there's a term the Mental Health Authority uses for their networks that an individual is assigned to. I forgot the name. They told us it at the last meeting. Remember? You may know it from the board. They, they have a term of a, of a connected provider network for the Mental Health Authority. So we're trying to work on how do we make sure we get that inmate to their assigned network of providers for mental health particularly. But we've got work to do there, and it's going to take a collaborative effort between the community resources and then the jail and, and WellPath resources.
It's no longer the MCPNs.
And they, the Mental Health Authority has also changed its name.
That's right.
I can't even remember that one.
Yeah.
To that point, you were talking about the amount of inmates that you have and they're Medicaid-eligible, low-income. Do you keep records on how many are former felons? Because there's an effort afoot from Detroit, Wayne County, to eliminate, ban the box and to try to get people employed again and get them to be part of society versus being pushed back into the streets where they, you know, repeat past performance. Do we keep any records on, like, folks that are felons?
I assume through the sheriff's office that happens. I don't know necessarily if that happens at the, at the jail medical facility per se.
And could we?
Right?
Yeah, the, the, yeah, the Wayne County Sheriff has records of, you know, past criminal behavior. So they certainly can identify individuals that have former felony, you know, convictions on their record.
That are in the jail, the ones that are in the jail?
Correct.
That'd be an interesting point to know, because, you know, maybe we collectively, working together, could actually try to make a little difference in repeat population. Because I know there was a, an issue with, with the prisons, that 37% of the people, after a former governor shut down the mental health institutions, 37% of the people in prison are mental health patients. So, I mean, you don't pay for it one way or the other, and it's like, if you can do anything to try to improve it or fix it, it would certainly be appreciated, so.
Well, toward that end, Commissioner, we have a pretty aggressive administrative jail release program where it is that we, being the WellPath Medical and Mental Health Team, release our most fragile medical and mental health individuals back to the community with a wraparound-type service, i.e. a warm handoff. I, I think like you were suggesting, Commissioner Card Coleman, where it is that they actually have an appointment, somebody may even come and pick them up from the jail if in fact, community supervision can be identified as a safe, public safety, you know, alternative, depending upon what it is that their charges are. And this is a pretty aggressive program where the fragile population in the jail is kind of scrubbed every single day. And we identify those folks that have nonviolent felony offenses, maybe misdemeanors. And the sheriff makes a determination, actually, Jerial Hurd, who is the population manager, I'm sure you're familiar with him, has the judicial power to in fact, release these individuals. And what we assure for this population is a warm handoff. So this is really a jail diversion program. There's a few different ones that exist in the jail for different populations. But we're pretty aggressive about doing that for this small, relatively small subset of inmates in the jail that are most at risk and most fragile.
Thank you. Commissioner Colleen?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I just wanted, at the Mental Health Authority, we're using the percentage of 81% of folks have mental health needs that are in the jail, and I'm sure that's the number that's being talked about. We have this diversion task force, the whole Miami-Dade thing that we're doing now, and I'm sure that's kind of a similar number over there. So that's the number we're using now.
So please proceed.
Hey, we're moving on now to objective number three. Redena Lee's going to go through objective three. We can probably skip the conclusion for now and just go to the findings.
Okay, thank you.
We'll go right to the findings. Just saving time.
Go right to the findings?
Yes.
Our first finding is the KPI monitoring requires improvement. This is page 38 through 40 of the report. CCS is contractually obligated to maintain performance levels to certain service-level agreements. Both CCS and HHVS now, right, refer to these as key performance indicators. HHVS and CCS agree to measures, to measure a total of 23 KPIs. CCS collects KPI data and calculates a blended percentage of completion for these 23 KPIs. There is no independent verification or review to ensure accuracy of reported data. We reviewed KPI reports for the third and fourth quarters of fiscal year 2017 and the first quarter of fiscal year 2018. 28 instances where various clinical services were below minimum threshold of 90%. And you can see this chart on page 39. HHVS did assess non-compliance penalties. There is no way to validate whether services have been performed and accurately reported. Our recommendation 2018-10, significant deficiency. We recommend that HHVS management implement procedures to review the validity of the KPI percentages listed on the report prepared by Correct Care Solutions. And the views of the responsible officials is on page 40 of the report.
Ms. Cora?
I believe that in this report, this is probably one of the most important findings and recommendations, because this is dealing with the clinical services that are being provided. And as we indicated, you know, that CCS is self-reporting their percentages as meeting the KPI performance indicators. And our recommendation to have the county do some verification of these self-reporting numbers to make sure they are accurate, because this is the clinical side where we're dealing with actual providing services to the inmates. I think it's very important.
And just to respond to.
Department agrees. This is back to the same thing we had two weeks ago. This is kind of that trust and verify issue. So we, we need to put in place systems where we look at the raw data and then confirm with sample size. We've gotten input from the auditor as to how to do sampling and so on, and, and we'll do that moving forward.
So we're rowing together. That's great.
Yeah.
Please proceed.
Proper monitoring of staff training. This is on pages 40 through 42 of the report. CCS is required to provide, one, their employees' access to at least 40 hours of continuing education annually. Two, the health service administrator is to ensure that the healthcare personnel receive at a minimum, one hour of continuing education per month for a total of 12 hours per year. We selected a sample of 20 employees to verify completion of required training. We were unable to determine if employee, if an employee completed one hour of training per month. Most employees completed at least 12 classes annually. However, none completed at least one class per month. HHVS management does not have a process in place to ensure required CCS training was actually provided, nor does CCS report the continuing education as hours of education received. Our recommendation 2018-11, this is controlled deficiency. We recommend that HHVS implement a procedure to ensure adequate monitoring of the contractual education and training requirements and are met by requesting a list of all training provided by CCS employees, to CCS employees. And B, require CCS to report continuing education on an hourly basis rather than by the number of classes. The views of the responsible officials are listed on page 42 of the report.
Ms. Cora?
We were able to confirm that all the professionals did have their certifications and licenses in place. That's one thing that was able to confirm. And while they may have received their 12 hours of training, because the way the training was being recorded, it was being recorded as classes rather than an hourly basis. So we need some type of conversion so it can be in compliance with the requirement of an hour per month. Then determine whether, as where the contract is written, it needs one hour per month. Well, that's not happening, but we're getting the toll that's required of the 12 hours. And there is ample classes available online, webinars, and that for staff to receive their training. So there is very much, as far as what they can obtain.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Monitoring the timeliness of responses to grievances. This is on page 42 through 45 of the report. The Wayne County Sheriff's Office provides an inmate grievance procedure, which is available to all inmates. The Wayne County Jail inmate rules and regulations in its grievance procedure number five states, a written answer to the grievance will be made within 10 working days. CCS has a written Wayne County Jail grievances process policy in place. However, healthcare grievances are to be processed through the sheriff's grievance software. Policy is silent as to processing timeframes. Healthcare-related grievances are classified into one of three categories: medical services, mental health, or medication. We requested the summary grievance report for calendar year 2017 through February 25th of 2018. And you can see the table on page 43 of the report. We selected a sample of 40 grievances and performed procedures to determine whether the grievances were addressed in a timely manner by CCS medical personnel and adequately responded to. The timeliness response, our testing disclosed two or 5% of the grievance forms could not be located. 13 or 32.5% had written responses provided to the inmate within the 10-day requirement. 25 or 62.5% had written responses that were not provided within the 10-day requirement. CCS does not have adequate processes in place to ensure response within 10-day timeframes. HHVS does not have an oversight process in place to ensure grievances are reviewed and responded to within the 10-day timeframe. Adequacy of written response. Of the 38 grievances available for review, 13 or 34% did not contain adequate responses other than inmate was released prior to response. For 12 grievances, the final response was in excess of 10 days. In five instances, the response took over 100 days. In those instances, when the inmate was released, the grievance should have been evaluated and a response included in the file. In addition, grievance responses did not always include all essential information. The validity of the grievance. 13 instances where no information was available to make a determination on merit of grievance. Nine instances where it appeared grievances lacked merit. 10 instances where we were not able to determine if grievances had merit, but did note the action was taken after the grievance date.
Would the department like to respond?
We understand and agree with the findings, and we've, we're going to work with, in this case, it's going to be both WellPath and the sheriff's office. Because unlike the healthcare requests, the sheriff takes, the deputy takes the original grievance, and then we're, we need them to enter it into their system and so on. So timeframes, et cetera, partly are dependent on the processing through the sheriff's office. So we're going to work on making sure that system is much tighter, and we are monitoring the data and the performance to these standards.
Thank you. Ms. Cora?
We also talked about two, some of the grievance responses was that the inmate was released prior to response being provided. We just believe it's important to take that grievance through the whole process and determine the validity of the grievance and answer the grievance in cases, that way it will be in the inmate's file, because you never know if that inmate's going to come back into the jail, so at least you've got a complete file on him as you at least address his grievance, not just that he was no longer there.
You said his grievance.
Her, I'm sorry. His or her grievance.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Recommendation 2018-12, significant deficiency. We recommend that CCS management implement additional procedures to ensure grievances are assessed, resolved, and recorded in the sheriff grievance database within the required 10-day response period. B, ensure that CCS management provides all essential information in grievance responses, including restating grievance, how grievances was evaluated and conclusion in all grievances. HHVS implement procedures to ensure that grievances are being adequately addressed and within the required timeframe. And the views of the responsible officials is listed on page 45 of the report. I now turn it back over to Mr. Mike Sinowski for the noteworthy accomplishment.
Thank you. One of the key contract provisions was that CCS had to submit for accreditation of all the jail facilities within 18 months of the contract start date with the National Commission on Correctional Healthcare, NCCHC. We confirmed that the submission took place within the required timeframe. The accreditation site visit was May 20th through the 22nd of this year. On July 23rd of this year, the county received notification that the Accreditation and Standards Committee of the National Commission Committee voted to award accreditation to the county with qualifications that compliance is demonstrated with all the essential standards and at least 85% of the applicable important standards. The compliance is due back to NCCHC by November 19th of this year. The committee acknowledged the facility's significant level of compliance with a number of their standards. Once these deficiencies, deficiencies are addressed, a certificate of accreditation will be sent.
So that pretty much ends our presentation. And I just like to, you know, a few things to note. This engagement took a long time. We had a lot of difficulties within the engagement, which, you know, we've outlined in our report. But I wanted to thank some individuals that I think helped us to be able to get the engagement movement and get it completed. One being Felicia Johnson, Commission Counsel. Without her help, I don't know if we could be where we are today to be able to finish the engagement. Then with the help of David Brooks, Dr. Keith, Brian Manning, and Nellie Lee. They were very instrumental in working through the findings and getting everything wrapped up. And also the CCS representatives who worked with us through the engagement. So I'd just like to thank everybody. Like I said, it took a long time, but I think it ended up being with some very meaningful recommendations that will be helpful.
Thank you so very much. So can I get a motion?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make the motion to receive and file them forward to the full commission. But I also want to give big thanks to the auditor, the Office of the Auditor General here. I believe it was something on the order of 16 months. And not all of your difficulties were reported within your report. But in reflecting on this and seeing how many kind of holes there were with oversight and data that if we didn't get on this report, because you began after there was like one year of data. And I can't imagine if we didn't get an audit like for another two or three years, you know, before, like when we were thinking of re-upping the contract, how many things would have gone on that would not have necessarily been addressed. And of course, I'm very cautious when you deliver governmental services and health services through a for-profit framework, that we get a handle on that, because there is that inherent conflict of interest. I'm totally opposed to for-profit medicine. I think it's the wrong way to go. But I think especially when dealing with a for-profit firm, that we do have the reins and the handles in making sure that they are not choosing their bottom line over these critical services. But big thanks to the auditor general and our staff. So I'll make the motion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is this moved and supported? Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? The ayes have it. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Next item E, social matters is may be properly submitted before the committee.
There are none.
Next item F, public comments.
Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment? Joe, you want to say anything? Anybody from the public like to comment? Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Next item, G, adjournment.